Watched clock never turns. Okay, I'll call to order the redevelopment successor agency meeting. It is 7:15 on February the 4th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Sorry, and Mayor Pats.
Here. Okay, do I have a motion for the approval of the final agenda?
I move.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Member Donahue and a second by Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, any ex parte communications? Seeing none, public comments for items on the consent agenda or not on this redevelopment agency item. Seeing none, we'll go to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Move the con-
They moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion by Member Medina, a second by Member Bowers. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. No action items, nothing else on the agenda, so this meeting stands adjourned. I now call to order at 7:16 the council member, council meeting for February 4th. I don't think we need to do a roll call, so we'll move on. Everyone still here? Do you have a motion for the final agenda?
They moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Martinez and a second by Member Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. And that brings us to special orders of the day, which is me. So, we have a special orders day proclaiming February 24th through March 1st as Eating Disorder Awareness Week. And to help us do that, I have invited a couple of friends today. So, I'm gonna introduce, I'm gonna move down there, introduce them, and then we'll read the proclamation. So, bear with me a moment. I think I can do it this way. There we go. Is that working? Good. All right, so, joining me today first is Signa Darpinion? If you'd come on down, please. She is the President of the Bay Area International Association of Eating Disorder Professionals. Did I get that right?
Yes.
And a good friend of mine. And then I'd also really excited to introduce Connie. Can you say her last name more? Subcheck. From Body Positive, right here in Berkeley. Body Positive has been around since 1996, and in that time, they have helped thousands of youth kids and young adults deal with eating disorders. They have research-supported resources for people in education, which is how I got to know Connie, treatment professionals, and the general public. And if you've not been to their website, it's just a wealth of resources. So Connie, would you join me down here today? I'm really excited to have the two of you here. So, thank you. So, I'm gonna get into the proclamation. Whereas eating disorders are a serious illness that can affect people of all genders, races, religions, ethnicities, sexual orientations, body shapes, and weights, with national surveys estimating that 30 million people in America will have an eating disorder at some point in their lives. And whereas the term eating disorder describes an array of illnesses that are characterized by irregular eating habits and severe distress or concern about body weight or shape, eating disturbances may include inadequate or excessive food intake, which can ultimately damage an individual's well-being. And whereas eating disorder issues can develop during any stage in life, but typically appear during teen years or young adult, and classified as a medical illness, appropriate treatment can be highly effectual for many of the specific types of eating disorders. And whereas the chance for recovery increases the earlier an eating disorder is detected, so it is vital to be aware of the behavioral warning signs such as preoccupation with weight loss, dieting, control of food, food rituals, refusal to eat certain foods, or to eat around other people, as well as physical symptoms including dizziness and fainting, feeling cold, frequent stomach cramps, and noticeable weight fluctuations. And whereas eating disorders have historically been associated with straight, young, white females, but in reality, they affect people from all demographics, and misconceptions have this, about this, have real consequences leading to fewer diagnoses, treatment options, and pathways to help those who don't fit the stereotypes such as athletes, member of the disabled community, the Jewish community, LGBTQ plus populations, men and boys, those in midlife and beyond, and people in color, people of color. Wow, I cannot read. Whereas the understanding that eating disorders do not discriminate is critical to making sure everyone has access to help and support. Whereas the healthy human body comes in all shapes and sizes, and we should appreciate those differences, encourage healthy behaviors, and treat every body with respect, now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Emeryville, the mayor does hereby proclaim February 24th through March 1st as National Eating Disorder Week in the city of Emeryville, to increase public awareness of this serious but treatable illness, and urge the people in the community to improve their understanding of eating disorders, to empower everyone to reduce risk factors and Javoin prevention efforts. Proclaimed this 4th day of February 2020 by the mayor of the city of Emeryville, Christian Pats. So with that, I want to say thank you. And I want to say, this is one of those things that I, this is an issue that I find really important because I've dealt with athletes, I've dealt with artists, I've dealt with dancers who've all struggled with eating disorders. They've been overwhelmingly male in my experience, and members of the LGBTQ community as well, not, in addition to the traditional white female. So, I really appreciate that. I would ask you, if you want to say a few words, I'd love to hear from you.
Well, first, thank you so much, Mayor Pats, and all city council members. It's an honor, and I just want to say that the Body Positive has been around for 25 years. We've helped thousands of people, and we will continue to do so. And my sister died from her eating issues and her body hatred, and so I started the organization to change the world for my daughter, but for thousands and thousands and thousands of young people. So, it's really an honor that you're caring about this issue. It's one that most people don't really want to talk about, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we do a quick picture?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as I mentioned at our last meeting, we have recruitment open at this time to pick up some unexpected vacancies that we still have. The applications are due on Monday, February 10th, and the appointments are scheduled to be on March 3rd at your special council meeting. I would note that as of today, we had no applicants, so please reach out to your contacts or anyone within the sound of my voice. If you feel like participating in your local government making a difference, please apply by going on our website. Thank you.
I was worried that was the case when I saw an ad on social media today from the Community Services Department doing outreach, so let's hope we can find some people. All right. Councilmembers, special announcement, reports on meetings attended. Go ahead, Mr. Bowers.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to update on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. I want to thank Mayor Pats for his support in my reappointment. I'll be up for reappointment at the mayor's conference in March, and the chair of the air district named me the chair of the stationary source committee, and I've outlined building decarbonization as my priority for the Bay Area's stationary source committee this year. So, little Emeryville will be at the helm of some interesting efforts to reduce noxious gases in construction materials and remove them from household appliances.
I feel like it's worth mentioning that you were also just selected as vice chair for ACTC.
That's, that's true, actually, yes.
Also fantastic for our city. Congratulations.
Thank you for all your work.
Member Martinez, Vice Mayor Martinez?
Thank you. I just wanted to report back on stop waste. So, as council may recall, I brought forward the options of stop waste, working on either a countywide ordinance or a model ordinance for, to stop the use of single-use foodware. And as we came back to stop waste, the staff there had convened with our technical advisory group, with our city managers, and offered a third option of a limited pilot program to help us understand more about what's needed in the county in terms of infrastructure and capacity to make the move to reusable foodware. So, that is what the board members voted on and selected because it made the most sense for the cities and the county.
Thank you. Anybody down here? So, I attended the mayor's conference on homelessness last week, and we're looking at what we can do as a region and the county working on it. There's still a lot of work to go, and I really wish I had a better update than we're in the process of talking about it and allocating the funds. I'm sure you're aware that the governor has set aside some funds to help us and making sure that those are put to good use. It's really nice to see our neighbors coming together to work on this collectively, and so I'm hoping to have more to report out as these, as these meetings continue. So, with that, we'll move on to the city managers' report.
None, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Excellent. Ex parte communications for items on the agenda.
I received several emails regarding items 12.1, 12.2, but I believe those were published as part of the administrative record.
Correct.
Same.
The same. I, I had conversations with folks regarding 12.1, also received emails regarding 12.1 and 12.2 for members of the public.
Yeah, and I had the same emails, and I had some conversations on automated license plate readers. So, okay.
Just the emails for me.
Perfect. And with that, we move on to public comment. Bear with me as I see. These are, okay, great. Public comment for items not on the agenda or on the consent calendar. Do we have any members wishing to address the council on those? Seeing none, that brings us to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to pull something.
Which item did you wish to pull on? We should have done that at the agenda approval. But what, which item?
10.6.
I'm okay with pulling that if everyone else is, so.
I'll move 10.1 through 10.5.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Vice Mayor Martinez with a second by Member Bowers for items 10.1 to 10.5 on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, with that, we'll go to 10.6, and I'm gonna hand it over to you, and then we'll take public comment.
AC Transit rep Greg Harper would have something to say about why this is-
Can you, can you speak into the microphone? I'm so sorry, I have a hearing impairment, so I'm having a hard time.
AC Transit representative from Emeryville Greg Harper, who's here, has some very good reasons why we should continue this item and not necessarily vote on it, and I'd like you to hear some of the reasons. Is that okay?
Certainly, if you want to approach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. If you'd curl that microphone around, I did not do that when I was done, and then in the future-
Sure, how's this?
Yep.
Okay.
Right ahead, yep.
Yes, this is something that, as you all know, is sort of taken, has a lot of momentum right now, is taken by Assemblymember Bonta, has come in, and he wants to put in a bill, and he is going to put in a bill, but instead of the usual thing of developing all support for the bill after the bill is in, people are asking for, asking for its support very early. The problem is this, a bus-only lane in and of itself makes everything worse, even for the buses. You have to understand that the buses bypass all the traffic, that, all the congestion that preset, pre, before you get on the bridge. We bypass that on a queue, and the lights are set up so that the bridge runs freely most, most mornings. So, for us, and, and this has all been studied by MTC, and last week, myself and, and Elsa Ortiz, Director Ortiz, and the general manager of AC Transit, met with Teslyn Gal and a board member and a staff member of ACTC at ERP to go over the studies that have already been done and are in MTC's hand about what the effect of just a bus-only lane is. And the problem is, they're fairly horrific in and of themselves, and the East, the East Bay Times has already picked up on this, and this is all now public information that's out there. So, we're kind of trying to cool down things a little bit because what we're afraid of is that if this goes out there and it is, and more of the articles like the East Bay Times came out with, which is, it's a two-mile backup up 80 for traffic, and it's going to just be horrific, is going to dominate the discussion very early. And what we want to do is to get together with, you know, ourselves, and tomorrow we'll be together with AC Transit and councilmembers Medina and Bowers for our meeting, and we can talk about a little there, but the ACTC is the one that has to kind of get its hands around this, in our, our opinion. And it's, what's happening is that this is jumping ahead on some councilmembers and the mayor of Oakland, because it sounds good, but in reality, it hurts everything in and of itself. Now, there's a lot of things you do. In fact, Emeryville is right at the foremost now, but the Paul Street, left-hand Paul Street, and that everybody recognizes now that that's adding a great deal of reduction, travel time reduction, for those buses being able to do that. It's all those little things that have to be done first before we do a bus-only lane.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this item?
Mr. Carpio. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio, and I look at the bridge as, as a solution to go across the bay, but there is other option than, than jumping into a lane to make a special lane for the bus and all that. And I have studied the bridge at the time where it was constructed. Unfortunately, it was not designed here, but from what I see, the bridge has been really overbuilt. It has been made to support a traffic of 50 tank, 50-ton tanks going across the bay. And so, because it was, it is overbuilt, I would suggest that, of course, I have nothing to do or say, but I would, I really want to make the point, we can build outside the bridge lane that will be supportive. We have the same theory with the jet engine. We have the middle of the, of the wing that has the engine, but the outside have as much stress. And so, here we, we talk about an engineering concept in which the lane will be outside the bridge going north from east to west, and from west to east on the left side, and it would be a one-way and both-way. And it is strong enough, or we need to put this in extension and put a trail for the bus to run. So, that's my suggestion. It's not worth anything, but thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll open up to board discussion. I think I'd like to go to our transit rep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with all gratitude to you, Mr. Harper, for coming, I'd like to point out a few things. One, the resolution that the city council is proposing this evening as item 10.6 is actually AC Transit's resolution. It was approved by your board, and I sit at ACTC with Elsa Ortiz, who asked me as recently as last Thursday to do this resolution. I also was on the phone call last week with Therese McMillan, Andrew Fermier from MTC, as well as SFMTA, Rebecca Saltzman from BART, Elsa Ortiz from AC Transit, three of your staff, myself, Teslyn Gal, all the folks you've mentioned, and we received a two-hour presentation that you're speaking of. And in that presentation, and in that discussion, several other things came to light which weren't mentioned. One, we all agree that the connectors and the approaches to the bridge are critical, and I think our conversation as the transportation liaison committee to you has indicated we clearly support things like a bus-only lane from Powell. We have supported other AC Transit enhancements, clearly making transit lanes accessible and full right-of-way on 40th Street, giving you your own dedicated lane. So, we're very cognizant of the operation side, which is what I think you're speaking to. But as I indicated on that call, I found that MTC's actions were very insincere. And they're very insincere because MTC did not publish or release the study that you're referring to, but they shared select pieces of it with the San Jose Mercury News, which led to an article that basically was Chicken Little, "The Sky Is Falling. If we do a lane on the bridge, we're not ready to do this, and, and we can't do this because all these other pieces aren't in place." And it's very clear to some of us who have been in these meetings that MTC wishes to slow this down. I don't believe that a resolution supporting, and as it says in this resolution, it doesn't just say the bridge, it says, "resolved by the city council of the city of Emeryville, that it hereby supports the advancement of the concept to install dedicated bus-only lanes on the San Francisco-Oakland Bay Bridge and connecting highways, interchanges, on-ramps, off-ramps, and approaches." And it further resolves that the city council calls on the California Department of Transportation to coordinate with MTC and relevant bus transit operating agencies to plan and implement bus-only lanes. Nothing this resolution does asks for this to be done tomorrow. I think this is a prudent thing to do. There need, we need to advance the dialogue around transbay transit. I don't see any value in holding this back. Our neighboring cities in Berkeley and Oakland have both passed this resolution. As I mentioned, AC Transit has passed this resolution, and, Mr. Mayor, I'm interested here for my colleagues, but I'm gonna put a motion to pass item 10.6.
Okay. Member Medina would like to go next?
Yeah, well, we'll have a follow-up on this in 14 hours since we all sit on the ILC together. I appreciate your concern. I get it. And, and I think the little things, like those connectors, are incredibly important. But the three of us, you, me, and Councilmember Bowers, have been talking about those little things for two years now at those ILC meetings, and having a groundswell of public support for the first time to remove a car lane and put a bus lane, you know as well as I have, the public has never responded positively to that idea, and having a growing segment of the population get excited about that and understand that adding more car lanes only continues to worsen traffic, and that we actually need to get serious about better transportation alternatives, this is a moment we need to take advantage of and like show public leadership on. And so, I, I want to second this motion. Yeah, I'll work with you, as we have been, on making this a successful bus-only lane, but I want to see a bus-only lane that just speeds buses full of 100 people, if it's the little Decker ones, across the Bay Bridge in 15 minutes, proving that cars are not the fastest way.
Member Donahue?
It makes intuitive sense to me that a bus-only lane, if the metering lights are controlling traffic, would in fact reduce the total throughput on the bridge, partly because you'll have, you have the maximum design throughput right now with the controlling lights allowing traffic to get onto the bridge evenly. And what happens in traffic is, when the density gets too high, you have stop and go, which actually lowers throughput, just from a raw engineering viewpoint. It makes sense to me that you would actually be reducing total throughput. And I think that I would have to see the studies that show that a bus-only lane would make sense. Yes, marketing-wise, what you're saying is true. If it helps people in various cities get off the dime, we could have fabulous lead-in to the bridge for buses only. Like, for example, right next to Target, we have a trans under the railroad track road that we could use as a right-of-way for buses to get on the bridge also. That would get the buses off of the 580 problem they have now. We could do things like that in our city that would end up being so net positive for having more options for getting to the city for, for us. You know, I just think that's where we should put our energy.
Thank you.
You're responsible.
You can, I guess. Go ahead. Actually, you know, let me see, Member Martinez, do you wish to add to the conversation before we?
I just want to say the same thing that I've said in the past, which is, I am tired of focusing resources on the comfort of single occupancy vehicles. There may be some changes in vehicle patterns, there may be some discomfort to people who are used to driving across the bridge, and that may encourage them to hop on that fast bus.
Member Medina?
I, I understand where you're coming from. I want to address your concern about throughput. If we're talking about the net number of vehicles, I haven't seen the study, that might be true, but the net number of vehicles does not equal the net number of occupants. A bus can move a lot more people than a single occupancy vehicle, which is what predominantly is going across the bridge at all hours right now. And so, if you count for that, the number of people you can move across the Bay Bridge in one lane on buses is, I think, like, what, 400 times what you can do with a vehicle travel lane, nor is normally the stat? It's, it's not intuitive if you're looking just at the sheer number of cars that can move across the bridge, but if you think about vehicle occupancy, buses over and over again are always the fastest way to move large groups of people, faster than trains So, yeah, I, we'll continue supporting this motion.
Did you wish to say something, you know?
I don't.
Okay. As I think the only member of the council who drives across the bridge on a daily basis in my, all alone in my Abrams tank. It's not gonna slow me down at all. I think there is some utility to a bus-only lane, if for no other reason than to encourage people like me not to drive across on a daily basis. And with that, we've had a motion from Member Bowers and a second from Member Medina. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
No.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, and with that, we move on to item 11.1, a public hearing. Resolution, the city council of the city of Emeryville authorizing the chief of police to issue an annual cabaret license to public markets. Do we need a presentation on this?
Can we waive the presentation?
Thank you, that's, that was a loaded question. So, yes, we're gonna waive presentation. Don't celebrate too much. But I do want to open the hearing at 7:41. To any members of the public wishing to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:41. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Martinez, a second from Member Medina. We all like our cabaret licenses. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, action items, 12.1, and I know we have a staff presentation for this one.
Mr. Mayor, we have two items tonight implementing, or proposing to implement the paid parking framework that you first, last touched, I believe, last February, so, a year ago, almost exactly.
Efficient if nothing else.
The last time. We republished the item last week, so we have two items before you tonight. Item 12.1 is a proposed contract to implement the services required for a paid parking program in Emeryville. Item 12.2 is legislation that is also required to implement the program. It's an ordinance which would require first and second reading and a resolution. With regard to the contract, we have provided on your dais a couple of things. One is a revised set of maps for the two sub-areas, North Hollis and the Triangle, to conform to the maps that were provided to you in the republished item 12.2 from last week, to conform to the direction that the council provided last year with regard specifically to Hollis. So, you have those maps on the dais in front of you. You also have a revised, proposed revisions to the resolution approving the contract to address an item that was brought to staff's attention by Councilmember Bowers last week with regard to the subcontractor for the automated license plate reader portion of the contract. And so, that is the system and device that's used for enforcement. The initial contract that is in your packet before you includes the subcontractor by the name of Vigilant. Based upon the city's sanctuary policies and resolution, Mr. Bowers noted that there were some concerns about that contractor. Staff is proposing to substitute that subcontractor with Genetek AutoView, which is an alternate provider of ALPR technology that would work just fine with the prime contractor IPS. And so, that is what's on the dais before you, is a revised resolution that would direct us to replace the subcontractor for the automated license plate readers with Genetek AutoView that would require some conforming changes throughout the contract, and so the proposed changes to the resolution do that as well. changes to the resolution do that as well. In addition to that being on the dais before you, that will be, I think, the last slide in the presentation for item 12.1. With regard to item 12.2, you received a republished report on Thursday of last week with some changes to conform the maps to, as I said, the direction you'd given with regard to Hollis, but also after we had published the initial report, staff noticed that the portion of 47th Street that was proposed for permit parking for Emory Unified employees also needed to include the City of Emeryville employees who work at ECL. So we sat down and worked out a proposal to have paid permit parking for those employees at ECL and also introduce metered parking, so the patrons of predominantly the pool in the mornings would have those spaces available to them. So those changes were in the republished packet last week, and that is part of 12.2. So again, we have two items before you tonight. Item 12.1 is the contract. Item 12.2 is the legislation. We have two presentations, and they'll, we'll be asking you to take two separate actions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Evans, who will walk you through the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening. We're excited to bring this contract before you. It is a turnkey operation for paid parking provided by EPS, including all the equipment and all of the services that our prior RFPs asked for. And we split those into two RFPs. One was really for the equipment and the installation of that, and one was for the tools we would need for enforcement and our ongoing operations. We received four proposals for both RFPs. We conducted panel interviews right here in this room, and we recommended IPS for the contract award. We are looking at kiosks predominantly throughout the city as our means of paid parking, using pay-by-license plates, but there'll be multiple pay options, and we'll talk about that a little more later. Where it's efficient, we'll put meters, we'll single and dual, such as remnant spaces or where there are only two spots between driveways. Here, too, we will have multiple payment options, but unlike the kiosks, we won't have pay-by-licenses. We'll instead have sensors, which will tell us when the same vehicle has stayed in the same place for more than two hours, so that we can change our pricing, as we'll discuss later in this, appropriate to the length of stay. We will have automatic license plate readers, you've talked, we've talked a little bit about who the vendor for that is, to be used for the enforcement of this program at both the kiosks and the meters. Signage program, so that this is conforming program. Enforcement and data management equipment, and all of this is integrated through those two systems. Also, moving from, right now, we do handwritten tickets, automating all of that, going to handheld citation devices and mobile printers, and then warranties for the whole system. The services after we do this initial installation that we'll continue to have to maintain our parking program will include both the maintenance of the kiosk and meters, but also the collection and knotting of coin from those equipment. Then the software to support our enforcement, citation collection, that whole process, and permitting, as we've alluded to at ECL. We will also integrate Park Mobile, a pay-by-phone app. The kiosk and meters is, we've been before you, and last year at about the same time you confirmed for us, a more circumspect scope of geography, so this is a pilot in solely the North Hollis and Triangle areas. It consists of about 300 existing green curbs designated for short-term spaces, so largely in front of commercial spaces. Additionally, we added some spaces on the cross-street of Adeline to serve that commercial area, and then 20 spaces where businesses have requested that we add additional meters to have turnover. I'm just going to run through some of this equipment pretty quickly, so we're aware of what we'll be seeing out there and what we'll be using. We'll have handheld devices, and those will be printing right there in the car. So there'll be digital ticketing, onsite issuance, and it will integrate back into the system. People will be able to not only use traditional coins and even credit cards they've come to expect here in the Bay Area, but on our starting day, we will have Apple Pay and Google Pay options, that near-field communication, and we'll have Park Mobile as a phone app. Our signage gives us an opportunity to do something a little unique as well, incorporating our well-known sign-of-the-times images that are on our utility box. We've conceptualized integrating that into a sign we've seen in Sacramento that has a very similar program, and we have the capacity to do that in-house, and then using some other "pay here" and "pay by plate" instruction signs, similar to those found in other communities. The contract that's before you today is about $1 million for all that equipment and the installation of it. That happens in the first year, and we also have ongoing costs for communication and processing. That's those databases I was talking about, the signals from all of our kiosks. And then we have collections and the citations and the maintenance. And together in that first year, and that million is covered mostly with an ACTC grant that there's a local match for, we then have ongoing of about $400,000, a little over that, estimated for ongoing years, with revenue to cover that. We are planning, the schedule looks at installation, starting with poles in late April, and getting the infrastructure all in through May. Citation procedures need to be adopted by the council for us to have a legally conforming program, so we'll bring something to you in May for how we'll do the enforcement. And then we'll start doing warnings, so people are aware of the change that is occurring in Emeryville at these sites, and then we'll start issuing citations in July. As City Manager had alluded to, to be able to respond to the questions of changing the license plate reader, we've put a revised resolution before you, adding substantially, and then language regarding changes throughout the contract pertaining to that. And with that, that concludes my presentation on the contract. The vendor is here, Mike Kito from IPS, if you have any questions for him or myself.
So let's do clarifying questions for the technology portion. Member Medina?
In how many locations do you expect that we're going to need double-headed meters as opposed to kiosks?
One of their first tasks is an installation plan, so I'll have a better answer shortly. But for the purposes of this contract, we estimated about 30 spots, and that could be dual or single-head. So if we had two spots between a driveway and it just, and there was nothing else around, like up on 66th, you know, we might just put two meters on one pole right there. If we have another place where it's at the end of a block and the kiosks are going to be much more efficient on the other side of the street, we might just put a single meter in that spot. But predominantly, our program is going to be kiosk, predominantly pay-by-license, integrated through that system.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions? Seeing none, I'm going to open up to public comment, and I have some comment cards here, but I want to be clear, this is just on the contract and the meter portion. We'll get to location with the next couple of items. So if you're expecting to comment, this might not be the moment. It might be on the next portion. I think that was clear. Seeing no comments, discussion up here, and I think Member Bowers, oh, sorry, do we have a comment? Please.
Thank you, Mayor Pats and councilmembers. My name is Brian Hofer. I'm the Executive Director of Secure Justice, which is a nonprofit that advocates against state abuse of power and corporate complicity with government policies that are adverse to human rights. I urge you to approve staff's amended resolution. I really want to thank Councilmember Bowers for raising concerns about the potential award of a contract to a vendor that's intentionally helping ICE target our neighbors. And I want to thank your City Manager and her staff for recognizing that a sanctuary city's budget should align with its stated values. Your neighbors in Richmond, Berkeley, and Oakland have all enacted a sanctuary contracting ordinance to mitigate this very concern. That might be something you want to consider down the road. It puts the burden on the vendor to certify that they don't provide data to ICE. The city councils of Richmond, Alameda, and Culver City have all terminated not renewed or not awarded contracts to Vigilant due to their contract with ICE. And a statewide coalition of almost 1 million people is working on the contracting ordinance that I referenced. We have multiple pages of logos. It's a very large, growing movement that's trying to get corporations to change their behavior. While their contract may state who owns the data and that it's your choice to access it, it's meaningless in practice. Vigilant cannot bind all downstream data sharing. They have thousands of local partners. They have no way to have the capacity or legal authority to prevent them. The ACLU has published hundreds of emails showing ICE agents befriending local law enforcement who then run queries for ICE. While any data sharing creates a risk applicable to many vendors, it is Vigilant's model and vast treasure trove that makes it the highest risk among ALPR vendors in the market today. Stated another way, if you don't use Vigilant, you'll face a lot less risk. Vigilant's platform creates an easy sharing mechanism for agencies that do not share your values. Police chiefs in Alameda and Tulare Sanctuary Cities have had to publicly apologize because they couldn't understand the opt-out nature that Vigilant had, and as a result, their data was exposed to ICE. If folks are willing to share with ICE in broad daylight, what are they doing in the shadows? We can be certain that they are not complying with SB 34, which is so widely ignored that the state has now called for an audit to ascertain compliance. A large portion of California is in open revolt. SB 54 is state sanctuary law. So Emeryville cannot rely on state enforcement. Relevant questions to ask tonight, does Vigilant have an operative contract to provide ALPR data on a platform that can be accessed by ICE? Yes. Is ICE accessing that data? Yes. Are you a sanctuary city and subject to SB 34 and 54? Yes. Have colleagues all across California started declining to do business with them? Share your values? Yes. And do alternate vendors carry the same risk, as I described earlier? No, they do not. Genetech is a widely-known, reputable vendor. They do not participate in the sharing of data with ICE. Thank you for listening.
Any other members of the public wishing to comment?
Yeah, hi. Much of what Brian stated is what I will be sitting. My name is Tim Kingston. I'm a East Bay resident, and I work with the San Francisco Public Defender's Office Racial Justice Committee. I'm not a fan of LPRs in general and its ugly sister, facial recognition technology, but there can be occasional needs for them. In this case, please do not use Vigilant. As Brian said, there's a documented history by Vigilant of sharing with ICE. Vigilant got a contract with ICE in early 2019. Over 9,000 ICE agents have accessed that data. There's about 9 million unique identifiers, that'd be different license plates. ICE does not control Vigilant's data, but ICE has access to that data. And any municipality that contracts with ICE then winds up, their data will frequently wind up at the behest of ICE. Vigilant draws from about 50 of the most populous metropolitan areas in the U.S. One of those, number 16, is the Bay Area, San Francisco, Oakland, and Fremont. Vigilant appears to be proud of its association with police agencies, but is generally less forthcoming about its dealings with ICE. Vigilant may protest it does not hand over data to ICE, but in fact, it can be accessed. I'll keep it brief, just for the sake of Emeryville and the state of California and its citizens, please make sure Vigilant does not get this contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sumina Osman. I'm the Government Relations Coordinator for the Council on American Islamic Relations, and I urge the City of Emery to not get into contract with Vigilant. The very fact that they, you know, can share information with ICE, it's very concerning for sanctuary cities such as Emeryville, and especially since we are a sanctuary state. We already have, you know, we have an administration that is targeting the most vulnerable of our populations, and I was just listening to the State of the Union address tonight, and he made several references to trying to attack the sanctuary state of California and some of our policies. And again, if they have access to informations and license plate, license plate information of those documented and undocumented, it is incredibly concerning that it is being shared with ICE. And so I, again, I urge you to, I mean, you already have alternate vendors that you could possibly use, so it just makes sense to go ahead and do so. So I thank you for considering this, and I hope that you'll consider the alternate vendors. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing none at this point, I'll move it to discussion and Member Bowers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank a couple people real briefly. I want to thank first the city staff. When I raised the flag about my concern with this subcontractor, it won't ever really be public, but the city staff did a lot of due diligence. They were timely and responsive, and I am grateful that we have staff that share our values as a community. I also want to thank the advocates who came this evening for all the tireless work you do. It is a never-ending battle to protect vulnerable people in our communities, and coming out tonight is much appreciated on my end. Brian said a lot of the things that I would have said, so I'm going to just hit with just my last point. We received a letter that said, you know, the information that's provided to us and the data generated is up to us as to whether or not we share it. Other communities get to make that choice, too. And I think it's a matter of white privilege, to be very frank, to have that position, to be in a place where you can say, well, it's your choice whether you wish to share your data or not, knowing that this company goes to other communities that don't share our values, and that people are harmed, they are terrorized in this country, because there is a federal administration that does not appreciate human beings and the plight that they have when they come to this country. And I think that businesses make choices, and Vigilant Solutions made a choice to enter into a contract with the federal government, and I think that's a reflection of their values. And that contract was for over $6 million to share data with ICE related to the tracking and whereabouts of people whom may be targets by our federal government. Those aren't our values, and I don't have any concern about the other four people sitting up here and where you all sit right now on this issue. But I think it's really important to speak more broadly to the Bay Area community. It's easy to look at our individual city and say, well, we'll just choose to opt out. But the reality is, opt-out in the data sharing, but the reality is that we need to hold businesses that engage in this conduct responsible, and the best way to do that is to not do business with them. And I hope every other city in the Bay Area chooses not to do business with Vigilant Solutions, because this is an affront to the values of our communities, and it is an affront to the people we are all under oath to protect every day. And I thank you all for coming and for your, again, for your advocacy and your work, and it's not unnoticed.
Thank you. Do you all just like to speak? Comments from here? Yeah, I think following that would be hard. I think I mentioned my concerns about automatic license plate readers a year ago when this first came up. I think once data's in a database and you're in business with people who are, you were polite about it, saying not sharing our values. When Stephen Miller is a senior advisor, you are white supremists. There is no bones about it. And we are in a time of no checks and balances, and states of emergency can be handed out, and all of a sudden, people are doing things reactively as opposed to thoughtfully, and those terms have no meaning. So with that, I look for a motion to approve the amended item.
Mr. Mayor, if it would please the council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended resolution as presented by staff that's on the dais with the following addition, which is to allow the staff to make conforming revisions to Contract Amendment A, I'm sorry, Contract Attachment A, Exhibits A and B, which are the North Hollis and Triangle sub-area maps, and any other changes made by the council in the course of adopting the resolution under 12.2, because this contract applies to the scope of that work, and so if we change the maps for any reason, we would need to allow the staff to then change this contract as well. So with the amended ordinance and that additional revision, I move this item.
I'm going to take privilege and second that myself, and I want to make sure that it's clear, and so we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to 12.2, implementation of the paid parking framework.
In order to implement that contract, we need to have an ordinance and a resolution that both set the meter rates and their locations. So that was part of the last, and as we talked about, there's some conformance around the EC sale parking permits, so I'll walk you through all those items. the EC sale parking permits, so I'll walk you through all those items. The changes to the ordinance are to take sections that were in the Chapter 9, Sections 4, and make them a Chapter 10 that's specific to parking meters for the resolution, and then adding meter zones to those zones, to that ordinance. And then the resolution establishes the rates and the locations in the North Hollis and Triangle parking meter zones. And then we'll issue preferential parking permits to Emeryville Unified School District and the City of Emeryville employees working at ECL. The framework is done by ordinance, so it establishes the meter zones. It establishes our minimum rate, so at no time will we charge less than 50 cents per hour, and at no time unless there's a change to ordinance would we charge more than $10 an hour. These are prorated at intervals of no greater than 15 minutes, so if you need a little time, you can get it. Rates are adjusted by the city council, and at the time of those changes, they can be no greater than 50 cents at any one increment, and they can't happen more often than 60 We recommend to the council to change rates based on occupancy, so if we're finding people aren't parking at our meters, the price is too high and it falls below 65% during the peak period, maybe that's lunch, or maybe that's as people arrive in the morning for different areas, we would reduce the rates. We would possibly increase the rates if they were finding it was above 85%. People were arriving and couldn't find a spot, they couldn't go into the businesses that we put these meters in front of. The initial rates are set by the resolution, so the first two hours are $2 per hour, and they're prorated at 50 cents for every 15 minutes. If you have time over those two hours, and these are mostly going in where we have green curbs, you would pay $7 per hour, and it'd be prorated at $1.75 for 15 minutes. If you paid that, it would be $46, the maximum rate for the day. So switching now from what's proposed for the pricing for the meters and the locations there, ECL virtual permit program and visitor meters, so there's two components of this on the west side of 47th Street, the west, I'm sorry, the west of San Pablo on both sides of 47th Street to have an employee parking permit that exists today for employees of EUSD and the city at ECL, and converts the existing program to virtual permits using the license plate reader, so everything's within that same system. And then to accommodate the pool users, which are there in the morning, they're there later in the day, so the idea is to have 12-metered parking spaces to allow those visitors throughout the day. The resolution also establishes those blocks in which we would be placing meters, so as clarified in what was sent last week, your direction in February was both sides of Hollis, north of Powell, that is depicted here, and the other areas are per the direction we received on February 19th of last year. Additionally, within the triangle, it reflects the action then, and then reflects those 12 additional meters that after we discussed that would be appropriate. And the table that was placed in your resolution was amended to include that area, but the table, if there are any discrepancies between it, the table would be directive for you, for staff implementing it. We would be operating initially Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. This is really, all peaks we found when we did occupancy studies were found within these times, and we wouldn't enforce on holidays, and we anticipate that you can prepay. So if you showed up at the pool at 7:00 a.m. and you wanted to pay for the time you would be over 9, you could pay for, say, that half an hour before you go into the pool. So what we're asking of you tonight is to do the first reading of the ordinance, changing the municipal code to add those parking meter zones and the reorganization, and a resolution, the resolution that adds the meter rates and locations in North Hollis and Triangle and allows for the ECL permit program. Any questions to clarify?
Clarifying question, go ahead.
The virtual license permit process, super into, is that going to be available for if a residential neighborhood does the petition and opts in, would they be able to get a virtual license process as well, or is that separate so far?
We don't have that scoped in this contract, but by piloting it for the ECL, we establish the database that we could then procure services regarding new residential permits being a virtual permit system.
Cool.
I'm sorry, don't we currently have one neighborhood that's permitted?
Yeah, but it's not virtual. So our existing residential permit program is being unchanged by our current contract or order.
And so it's not being rolled into this, that's what I was talking about?
Right, yeah, not yet.
Member Donahue?
If we want to change locations of things like drop-off zones or loading zones because businesses change, or the zoning will, you know, allow certain changes to happen, how flexible is this system to allow change?
I think the existing process on curb changes continues unabated by this process. If it requires that a meter must be removed, that'll be something that we will look at doing. There are jurisdictions that are looking at pricing, loading, and unloading, so we might think about different ways to just program those. And where we have kiosks, we could, through signage, make exemptions within those areas. I don't know if there are any other practical applications you might speak to, how you've done that in the past.
But councilmember, with regard to the process for loading zones, for example, that would continue to go to the Transportation and Public Works Committee for recommendation? And if there were a proposal to, for example, remove a meter and convert that to a loading zone, that would require review by that council committee?
Okay, thank you. Other clarifying questions?
Is this an appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, to ask a question about the ordinance language? Yes?
Yes, please.
Yes, please? Okay. On page four of the ordinance, I just have one clarifying question. Subparagraph D there at the top that begins, "The city council may by resolution decrease parking meter rates within the North Hollis and Triangle parking meter zone if the average parking occupancy falls below 65% during the peak period." Over what period of time are you calculating that? A week, a month, a year? It's not clear to me how you're going to, if tomorrow it's under 65%, are we going to change it?
I think we would, as a starting point, use the methodology that was used at the time of our most recent parking management plan, where we were looking at peak hour periods and non-peak hour and reporting. So you would have reporting and consider analyticals that had certain days that were at 8 to 9, 9 to 10, 12 to 1, 1 to 2, and it would be reported over a period of days, and we looked at the methodology of that prior study.
And additionally, the policy as proposed, changes could not be made any less than a 60-day window, so at the least, it would be data collected during a 60-day period. Now, practically speaking, that's not, it's unlikely that changes would happen every 60 days, because you have to collect the data, analyze it, and bring it to the city council for action.
That was my thought, is that.
Right, so I understand that there's at least 60 days before you change it. I'm not concerned about the frequency of the change. I'm concerned, how do you determine that it's fallen below 65%? Is it, you're going to do a point-in-time count on a Wednesday, and you're going to compare it to the baseline point-in-time count? Are you going to do a survey over two weeks, and then you're going to average it to determine if it's below the point, the prior baseline? Like, what's the method we're using to determine that?
I think we're not asking for the council's direction on that as part of this ordinance. If the council would like to engage in that level of direction, we could bring that back with the parking management plan that we'll be bringing in May, but I think the methodology, to some extent, also will be using the data that we'll get from the meters themselves.
Okay, I don't propose a change. I just wanted to know, and if we're going to come back in May and talk about it further, that's fine. I just want to know how people can reasonably predict we're going to be looking at peak hours, and what's the metric for that, so.
Member Medina?
I have a follow-up for that, actually. Because the meters have sensors in the domes, are they collecting just constant information about occupancy, maybe?
Yeah.
About, yeah. Please use the mic.
I'm Mike with IPS, Mayor and councilmembers. So yeah, theoretically, they are. If you wanted to turn them off during just enforcement hours, you can, but I think a benefit to cities is after enforcement hours, it will still be collecting as far as behavior, average stay, turnover stay as well, too, so that's everything that's available to you.
And we get all this data as part of the contract?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, that will be a limited number. That kind of data is not available with the kiosks, so it is a trade-off between those two technologies.
You made me like meters for once.
I thought you might be hit by that. Timing.
Okay, other clarifying questions? Okay, I do have, so, this is the time for public comment, and as I said, this would be the opportunity to talk about location, correct? So I do have a card from Albert, if you want to come speak first?
Yes, I would love to. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Mayor Pats and councilmembers, how are you? Albert Repolo, Ruby's Cafe owner, 18 and 1/2 years, lived in Emeryville for 32 years. Okay. So I see you propose that in front of the cafe you have meters. I would love for the meters to go away and just leave my green zone, that's 86 feet, that's been there for 18 and 1/2 years, actually probably 19, because I got it in May before I opened up. So I would love that for my business to keep thriving and continue as a small business. Since small businesses are dying in Emeryville and disappearing, I would like not to disappear, and I would beg you all to give me the green zone, leave it alone, go to 30 minutes so everybody could come in in the morning, get what they need to do, come for lunch, grab something from across town, and not have to pay $2, $3 while they're waiting for a sandwich, which is $11.25, add $2, is going to give them $13.25 by the time you get a drink, and you'll need a mortgage, okay, to have a sandwich in Emeryville pretty soon. So I beg you all to really think about this. I'm welcome to have a conversation with any of you, if you have questions, what you want to do, if you want to take out the map. I got a little whitey out, we could take out the green, the meters real quick, and we could move forward and make this a wonderful day. Okay? Thank you.
Other members of the comment, please come on up. If you don't have a card, you can come to the mic as well.
Nancy Pooley, 32-year resident of Emeryville also, and I support everything that Albert had to say. I'd like his business to stay successful, and I think you should keep the green zones. Thank you.
Okay, I have Ron. Come on up.
I appreciate the flexibility that you might allow for the changes that might occur, because I, this is a real moving target, and it's kind, I view it as an experiment in many ways, since it's somewhat of a piecemeal parking plan. So whatever you can put into the ordinance that allows for flexibility, if changes need to be made, I think is very important. I'm happy to hear that the parking meters do provide the data as to what the use will be, and I wanted to also ask what the reasoning is for parking meters on the east side of Doyle Street across from the community gardens, since I don't know of any commercial activities or businesses there, with the exception of the massage school that I think has a certain amount of visitors, but they have quite a bit of parking on the east side of their building. So I would like to find out what the component of that choice is. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi. Speaking of that, my name's Renee Aroneta. I'm the campus manager of the National Holistic Institute. We've been there for 40 years, and while, yes, we do have some parking in the back of the school, it's not nearly enough for our staff and our student body, which is growing. Right now, currently, it's already very difficult for our students to afford their gas and/or public transportation. A large number of our students, which is growing, are homeless or have other severe challenges where they're trying to decide between meal, food, so them having to pay up to, I don't know, it was $46 a day. I mean, they're only in school for four hours, but for our staff also, who come from other areas, if they don't get their first thing in the morning, there's no more parking available to them. So for us, it's really, seems very detrimental to our business, both for our student body, but also our staff. Our teachers right now, when I have to offer them sort of their salary for the year, it's really difficult for me to find qualified staff, and if I'm looking at them having to pay another $10, something thousand dollars just for their parking for the year, that brings the salary down even further. So I really urge you, either, I mean, it seems like the parking is going forward. If there's a way for it to, I don't know if there can be discounted rates for students, or if there's any way to have it sort of ease into the price mark that was mentioned so that we can figure out, I don't know, what we can do, how we can respond to it in a way that can make it not have such a negative impact to our student body and our business. So, thank you.
Any other, nope, great.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Nasser Azimi. I am the co-founder of Ohana Cannabis. We are a small business, much like some of the folks that spoke, and we really appreciate this parking plan. On a daily basis, we literally witness folks parking in the green zone and jump on buses and Amtrak and basically leave our businesses stranded. We also literally witness folks circling the block, not finding parking, and basically going to the neighboring city, to our competitors. We really appreciate this plan. We would like to see this put in motion as quickly as possible, because I think the parking fees would enable turnover of the parking spots, and at some point, there was a discussion about business owners basically purchasing a block of permits for their employees and such. I think it would alleviate a lot of the circumstances that are being talked about. In the context of our business in particular, we believe our business revenue and the taxes to the city would nearly double or triple in the context of the business flow that we expect to gain. Thank you, appreciate your support.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I live on 62nd and Hollis, and I just actually caught wind of this action happening just the other day from my dear friend Albert here. And this is my first opportunity to really, like, speak on something like this. I can't really speak on the rest of the neighborhoods that this is going into, but where we live on 62nd, it's already kind of difficult to find parking for our residential parking, and I'm curious if, as a resident, just one of the questions, as a resident, if I parked in a meter, am I exempt from that meter? Because I can't already find parking for our own, our own units that we live in, and also, whenever we have clients that come over, I just feel like it's going to add a lot of stress to the community, and I know that you're already into this motion, and so much time and energy has already been implemented to create this system. But I just offer maybe some more fun ideas to bring in money and revenue into our city by maybe like throwing some events and local community, maybe community building, instead of kind of, I feel like this is pushing away community. So I feel like this money could be allotted to creating events and bringing community together and raising even more money than you can foresee with these meters. So, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Okay, last chance for anybody who wants to speak. Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion. Member Donahue, would you like to lead us off?
Well, I'd just like to point out that the concept of our parking plan is not that it's going to generate extra funds for our city. The concept is that it's going to pay for itself, that, but it's going to provide turnover that will help more businesses and community members, is the idea. And so I would just say that that's the concept, and I appreciate us being able to be flexible and really look at how the meters function. and really look at how the meters function and how the kiosks function when they go up and really pay attention. I think we should be prepared to make adjustments because this is a beginning of something for us, new, so.
Thank you. Member Medina?
Yeah, I fully agree with Member Donahue. The goal of this is not a money grab from the city. We want to have a revenue-neutral program that encourages economic vibrancy. We are very behind the curve on having paid parking in Emeryville, and the reason many cities do it is to encourage that curb turnover. When we started this process a long time ago, we did a parking survey, and it showed that we had curb occupancy of up to ninety-five percent in some parts of our town. That is higher than some parts of Union Square in San Francisco. We are overparked, we have too, or underparked. We have too many cars for the amount of spaces we have in Emeryville. And the reason is, we don't have a paid parking management program. We have people from San Francisco who repeatedly told me Emeryville is where they leave their car when they go to Tahoe for the weekend. That is not a good use of our public space. And so having a paid parking management plan is actually vital to maintaining our small business community. I understand specific concerns, and I want to work with you to make this work for you. But in general, I think that this highly targeted first step that can be flexible, that can have adjusted rates, is excellent. I've used ParkMobile many times in Oakland, and I think it's a great system to be linked into because people don't have to download yet another app. So yeah, I really appreciate the direction this has gone.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
I will just sign on to the comments of my colleagues and share that I am interested in changing people's behavior. I have neighbors who have seven cars for a two-person household. I have been witness to folks who park in our town and don't live here. There's one on our mayor's street that's always in front of his house. That person doesn't live in town. It's a large vehicle. It takes up a lot of room.
Actually, my neighbor's vehicle.
And it's something I've seen over and over again, and again, just to reiterate what Member Medina said, the point is to encourage vibrancy in our business community, and I think this is a very good first step.
Member Bowers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with all of my colleagues on the points that were raised, good points about this is designed to be a self-financing program. It's not a revenue generator. We're here to actually create an enforcement mechanism to help turn over the other spaces. So I appreciate Member Donahue and Medina raising those points. Just as a reminder, this money to the comments about, can we use this money on other things? This is a grant that has to be used on this, and we received it from the county, and it was asked, sought before a majority of this council was on the council. But as the representative to the county transportation agency fought to get all of our funding, and this is one of the things that we were funded to do, so this is a program we do need to implement, and as Member Medina noted, it's the right thing to do. We are behind the times on this, and it will lead to turnover. And as Member Martinez alluded to, I do town halls around the town, and I can tell you, I was surprised when you said the seven cars. I had a resident in a building who told me he has seven vehicles he parks on the street. And so I think there's this perception that the cars that are here, it's like that they're all being used and that they're all coming and going to the town, and the truth is that a lot of them aren't. And someone who lives right next to the second-to-last Trans Bay Bus Stop, every morning at six-thirty in the morning, all the cars from Berkeley and Oakland, people who do not want to sit on the bus for forty-five minutes coming down from the hills, drive ten minutes down Fortieth Street, park their car in the Park Avenue neighborhood, fill the entire neighborhood up, and all jump into line to get on the bus. So we have, we have this issue around the community where we have, as others have already noted, become kind of a regional parking lot of sorts, and I think that once the enforcement mechanism is in place, we will actually see changes in behavior. I'd also note that we have a lot of parking garages. If you do a Google Maps satellite image view, you'll actually see oceans of surface parking at photographs taken at three in the afternoon that are empty in behind buildings that are in these neighborhoods, and parking garages that I have walked through and toured that are empty in different parts. So there are choices people are making, and nobody wants to pay for it, but the reality is that the street is a public, is a public resource, and we have to make best use of it. All that being said, I do want to propose one small change to the map if the council is interested. I learned that a parking space on the street is roughly twenty-two feet in order to be an appropriately sized space. And in reviewing all of the spaces on here, to the inquiry made by Albert Repolo, the owner of Ruby's Cafe, the block that he is on is either completely red-curbed, is part of the parcel delivery service buildings, or it is the green curb, the green curb that was dedicated in front of his building to allow for turnover. And I think that sixty-six feet of that space could remain, so we'd still have some meters, but there could be three spaces in front of the building that are treated as thirty-minute zones so that people can come and pick up a coffee and a sandwich and leave. And when you look at the other business districts and areas here, we don't really have another small cafe that really foots that bill that faces that challenge. And so I think in the interest of our stated prior goals and commitments to small business, I think that is a reasonable concession to give up three parking spaces from the corner of Sixty-Second and Hollis Street on the west side of the street going north, sixty-six feet. That would be the only change to the maps that I would request.
So I want to thank my colleagues for the comments they made.
Yes.
We started this process, I think, before I was on council even. It seems like it's been that long. And what we were presented with a year ago was, you couldn't, we didn't have enough colors to color-code the map that we had come up with and the plan. It was, I think, four-dimensional at that point. And what we reset to was, what's the purpose of this? The purpose of this plan was to create turnover in places that needed turnover, which we had tried to do with the green curbs but failed because the second purpose of this plan was to fund enforcement because we didn't have funds to fund enforcement. And so when I hear, I'm going to go to the community garden, when I hear about staff parking and student parking there, that speaks to me, but the only reason they're able to park on that street is not because that is allowed for extended periods of time, but because we're not able to enforce the time limit that is already there. And so we are talking about enforcing what's there. You said parking all day. They shouldn't be parking all day. It should be two dollars for an hour, four dollars for two hours to encourage the turnover in that space. And I, to your point about in front of the cafe, I hear that, but to encourage the turnover, that is the purpose of being able to pay for the enforcement. Otherwise, we're in the situation where we are now, where people can park and stay until we have complaint and have hours on end. We're not asking forty-seven dollars to help us cover the costs of enforcement. We're asking, you know, fifty cents an hour to a two dollars an hour in that range. So I feel like at a certain point, we're going to carve out all the businesses and/or all the residents and all the neighbors. What we said and what the plan was as presented a year ago was the idea that we look at, where are we already having short-term parking? What do we need to do to enforce that, not based on complaints, but affirmatively enforce it? And that is to pay for parking enforcement, and that was the purpose of this ordinance. So I do not necessarily support that one change because I think it is not the purpose. The purpose is, we want to have that turnover, and we do that by the meters. Member Donahue?
Okay, this is a technical question to John's idea. Would we have the budget or the efficient measuring mechanism to ticket a green zone because our vehicles would measure the time that it's been in a green zone, or no, it would fall outside of the system?
Well, we would, we would use the same enforcement methodology, but what I think I understood from Councilmember Bowers was that these would become thirty-minute zones, so non-metered thirty-minute zones, so they would have to be programmed into that location for enforcement at stays of no longer than thirty minutes, but Ms. Evans?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we will be staffing this with our own police office, you know, enforcement officers. It would change the schedule of when they would need to do that initial check, and they'd need to come back within thirty minutes to keep that at their, and so there's no other operational space where that's happening, but that may be able to be scheduled in. I don't know, Mike might have some experience with the variations in times.
Yeah. Before we continue down the path, I would just note, Mr. Mayor, that if you look at Exhibit B, the triangle map, on San Pablo, there is, you know, I, the colors aren't great with this small map, but the second thing in the legend is the time-limited curb, which is actually like this forest green color. And that forest green color is at the corner of Adeline and San Pablo, on the west side, the east side of San Pablo, in front of Red Wing Shoes, in front of Showers of Flowers. And if you go up the street at Forty-third there, it's in front of Eres Mindi and Los Cantaros, and they have a parking lot. But we've given them a time-limited curb where people have thirty minutes to an hour to park there and be enforced, and we do not have meters on San Pablo there. So I think it's inconsistent then that we should put meters throughout the entire San Pablo corridor and ask Caltrans to do if we're going to do that, because if we're going to say everybody's playing by the same rules, I don't think making a sixty-six-foot exception for a small cafe that's been here for twenty years is out of the ordinary if we're doing that for all the Triangle businesses. That's my point of view.
One second here, clarification.
I still wanted to hear the technical side of enforcing in other parts of the city, you know, enforcing two-hour zones that we have, for example, that are not on these maps, or is there, you know, does, does this system do any of that, or no, it's only our police who enforce non-metered spaces?
Yeah, so if there's non-metered spaces, it's going to be relying on the actual LPR system, and what that's going to do is it's going to go ahead and digitally chalk that. You might think of some other cities that actually drive around and chalk tires. So it'll run around one, it'll timestamp and geofence it, it'll come around again, and if it hasn't moved within that max stay, it will send a notification to the actual enforcement officers, and then they can go and write a ticket.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Yes, that does.
Okay.
Okay, that convinces me we can do what John is suggesting. I think we should try it as a test.
So coming back around, I want to follow up on what Member Bowers said. I'm under the impression there's a reason we're not metering that part of San Pablo?
We chose to not go through the Caltrans approval process to put meters on their right-of-way.
Right, and that was, so that is why it's carved out. It's not our right-of-way, it's theirs. But I hear you.
We could put red curbs down it then.
I mean, we could.
Yeah.
So, you know, and feel free to propose that. So, all right, any other comments or questions? Discussion? All right. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the, well, this is a first reading of an ordinance.
Just to clarify, if I may, the ordinance specifies the broad parameters, right? So these maps are not part of the ordinance?
They're in the resolution.
They're in the resolution. So your proposed changes would not affect the ordinance?
I'll let someone else talk about the ordinance.
Can I ask you another clarifying question? If there was a suggestion to change the time of a curb, would that not be a completely separate ordinance, or can we do it under this map? Right, if we're suggesting?
Talking about duration or the times of operation?
The duration. If you're talking about a thirty-minute curb, isn't that?
So that's going to have to come back as a separate item?
Yeah, they're like just a transport.
We're just voting on green curb or metered curb.
So we need you to take two separate actions on this item. The first is a motion on the ordinance itself, and what is included in the ordinance is the zones where paid parking may be installed. And the second action we need you to take is on the resolution, and that has the specific block faces, and that would be where, if the council so chose, you would give us the direction to amend the map for the north Hollis area to remove sixty-six feet from the corner of Sixty-Second and Hollis North on the west side. And then we would need to come back to create that thirty-minute zone.
So do we have a motion on the ordinance?
I'll move to read by title only.
Second.
Vote, or roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville repealing Sections four-dash-nine-point-zero-two through four-dash-nine-point-fourteen of Chapter Nine of Title Four of the Emeryville Municipal Code pertaining to parking meters and adding Chapter Ten to Title Four of the Emeryville Municipal Code entitled Parking Meters with sequel determination of exempt pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines Section one-five-zero-three sub-C.
Okay, do I have?
Ordinance, anyone want to move the ordinance?
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, okay. Now we move on to the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a motion?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution and the attachments and exhibits that go along with the resolution and amend Exhibit A by removing the proposed meter kiosks for a distance of sixty-six feet on the west side of Hollis, beginning at Sixty-Second Street at the south end and going north, and turning it into a time-limited curb for a future time to be determined by the City Council at a future meeting.
I second that.
Have a motion in a second. I don't think it's worth putting in a substitute motion, so seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. That brings us to twelve point three. Resolution?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interrupt for a moment?
Please.
I would really like to thank Amber Evans. This has been beyond, kind of beyond imagining the amount of work this has taken. I think the staff report reflected the enormous amount of detail. While it was a year ago that we came to the last time, I don't think a day has gone by in that succeeding year that she hasn't been working on this, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. As we all settle in, we're at twelve point three, which is the Waste Management Contract.
So, Mr. Mayor, we have a presentation for you this evening. Ms. Humphrey will give you that. We also have representatives here from Waste Management to answer any questions. But just to remind you, this follows on a process that we started last March because our Waste Management Contract would otherwise expire next December without an extension. So with that, I see Ms. Humphrey is ready.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Nancy Humphrey with Public Works Environmental Programs, and this is my third time up here on this topic. First time was last March when we came here and gave that timeline for the end of this contract term and talked about the extension, and we were authorized to go ahead and negotiate an extension. Then in October of this year, October of last year, October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, we came back and talked about business terms that had been negotiated during that intervening period. The proposed terms that you saw in October included a one-time rate adjustment at the beginning of the extension period, modifications to the annually-applied refuse rate index to better reflect actual costs, the addition of a contamination notification process and fees for repeat incidents if you're, if you're recycling and is not, and composting is not sorted properly, some new tasks related to compliance with the still-pending legislation of SB thirteen-eighty-three about short-lived climate pollutants, which include methane, one of the off-gases of landfills, and the extension of the agreement for ten years. We had the option of two, up to two five-year extensions, and we came with the terms of a ten-year, ten-year extension for the purposes of better responding to SB thirteen-eighty-three and also for price, pricing reasons. We got better pricing at that point. So that was October, and then since October, there've been a few additional changes. Waste Management proposed new, new procedures for responding to changes in the recycling market. So we've all heard the stories about the changes in the recycling market that have had, in some cases, really big impact. So there's, we have negotiated terms that would codify how we would determine what the value of a particular recycled material is, what the steps would be for Waste Management to notify the city, and the city would be given time to determine whether we wanted Waste Management to dispose of those items or to continue to recycle at an additional cost. And then the cost would be applied in the following year's rate increase. rate increase to applicable, the applicable, um, accounts. So if it were an industrial product, residents would not be charged that additional charge, just the, the users. So that's, that was a big thing that came in after you saw the business terms. We also removed the requirement to purchase the tracking software, because we didn't have enough information, and Waste Management has ways to track, uh, the materials and the data, and we are currently going to work on that, uh, on that, using those, um, tools. And we had thought about, we had worked on, um, addressing the expected requirements in SB 1383 for the containers, bins, and carts to be color-coded in a consistent way statewide. And we had talked about how to handle that, and what we landed on was, we don't have the information yet, it's not final. So, we did put in this, uh, agreement language about, um, how we would try to, if, if we had to change either lids or bins, or cart colors, that we would do it over time, that the amount of money that Waste Management spends every year to replace equipment anyway would not be borne by the city, it would just be additional costs that would be borne by the city. And then, um, we recently discovered that although overages have been part of the contract and, and have been charged since 2012, we didn't have the specific language about the procedures for overage charges in the contract. So we added that, kind of to mirror the contamination charges. So, in summary, the proposed terms still will result in about a 3.9% annual increase to customers. And at the end of the contract term, the rate for single-family customers is still, is estimated still to be lower than the current loaded, lowest rate among our neighboring jurisdictions. So, it's still a good deal for our customers. Um, changes in the recycling market, if, if those provisions are used, would add a maximum of half a percent a year to some customers' rates. Um, and as I said, the container specifications in SB 1383 will be addressed in the future, and may lead to additional costs. It may be a change in law provision that we, we need to invoke. So that's, that's what I've got. Do you have any questions about this proposal?
Clarifying questions? Okay, from there we'll move on to public comment, and I do have a speaker card. Um, turn in a speaker card. Todd, it looks like Todd, but it-
Ninehouse.
Ninehouse, yeah?
Uh, sorry, my writing is very-
You know, it's not you, it's me. I've gotten, I used to be excellent at reading handwriting, and I butchered it last meeting, and I saw this and said I'm going to butcher it again.
I gotta check your, uh, school administration credentials, like, you have all kinds of kids writing and everything?
I, I'm too far out of the classroom. It's been too long since I've been in the classroom, and this is not, you came here to have a speaker-
Not patronizing you by comparing you to your child.
Yeah, I, we're way off topic, so, please.
I have problems reading my own handwriting at times.
Yeah, so, thank you.
My name's Todd Ninehouse, I'm the Senior District Manager for Waste Management of Alameda County. Um, and Mayor, members of the councils, good to see you again. Uh, I'm just here to, um, answer any questions you may have, and thank you for the support that we've had over the years, and we look forward to continuing to, uh, work with you over the up, upcoming years, um, as, if we, you so choose to continue and extend this contract.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll go to conversation. Anybody have anything they want to say? Member Martinez?
Uh, I just wanted to thank staff for working on this extensively, and really being ahead of the curve on this contract, and having a lot of foresight, um, with all of the issues that came about. Um, I also want to express to Waste Management and to staff that I'm very interested in the development of the educational materials, um, especially if, if folks are, you know, getting charged fees for putting the wrong thing in the wrong cart, they need to have all of the right information. Um, I'm especially also interested in making sure that the children in our school district have that information as well, because they take all of that information home with them, they become the enforcers there, and, um, we want to really complete that cycle. The last thing I want is, um, to make a request of staff to have an information item when the rules and regs for 1383 are published. Um, even before we know what the costs are going to be, I just want to know what we're looking at in terms of, are we replacing whole carts, are we at putting stickers on, are we replacing lids, um, just so I can talk to my colleagues around the county and, and compare notes and, and, um, just see what the state of things is. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, what we'd like to do is actually schedule a study session when that happens, because we think it's going to be an extensive conversation.
Wonderful, even better.
Member Donahue?
I, I just want to, uh, thank Waste Management for allowing me and Council, or Vice Mayor Martinez, the opportunity to see up close how you function at your facilities, and, uh, how your employees are treated. And, uh, I think you are better at treating the waste than the competition, but also, I think you have a forward-looking group and attitude that's likely to continue to be good. So I feel comfortable with this long extension.
Members of Council wish to speak? Okay, I have a, I just want to start by thanking the city manager in particular, but staff in general for working on this. This was a, uh, a mammoth undertaking, and I'm glad we are where we are. I just can't let this go without speaking on, uh, the negative valuation of recyclable materials. Recycling has come and gone as a viable way to reduce our waste stream. We are going to find fewer and fewer takers, and so I really want to keep an eye on this, and really sort of, and I'm looking to you, Member Martinez, as our representative on Stop Waste, the amazing work you do. Uh, we're going to be dumping tons of recycling into the landfills in the very near future, just because people aren't processing it the way they used to. And I'm, I'm, I just wanted to make that comment, and then I'll look for a motion for approval.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Martinez, and a second from Member Medina.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. And with that, we are on to 12.4, uh, declaring an urgent action with regard to bicycle and pedestrian safety.
Welcome, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more thank you for me, for Nancy Humphrey, who's really worked quite closely on this as she runs out the door.
Thank you, get some cough drops.
Not sure if she thought this is what she'd be doing for the last year, but she's done a great job.
Thank you, okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, item 12.4, um, is, uh, a response to a future scheduling item that, um, Councilmember Medina introduced and the council supported, um, to produce a state of urgent action, um, with regard to bicycle and pedestrian safety. Um, she threw that challenge down before, uh, us with a few ideas. Um, this has been discussed also a little bit at Public Works and Transportation, um, and sort of, I would say, also at, uh, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee in a more general way. Um, so we, we took that challenge and put together, staff brainstormed, um, the list that you have in front of you, um, in terms of a number of things that, um, we are seeking your direction for us to prioritize, um, to address, um, bicycle and pedestrian safety throughout the town. I'm happy to try to speak to them. Um, I did not ask, uh, Mr. O'Connell to stay late tonight, because he was at the BPAC last night, um, but we did have the opportunity to meet together with Councilmember Medina this morning and, and walk through these. There's just a couple I'd like to highlight, um, that we're pretty excited about and think we can do fairly quickly. One of which is the 20 mile per hour zones on the Bicycle Boulevards. Uh, so, we, we liked, we've, we've worked pretty hard in terms of how we can approach that, and we think we can come up with an approach for the council to adopt for those, um, relatively quickly. The other is the, the, what did you call it this morning? The LRSIP? The Local Road Safety Plan Funding, um, which our senior engineer, Ryan O'Connell, identified. It's an interesting little funding source, um, through the state, that, um, I think the current dollar amount he mentioned this morning is $80,000, and it's essentially a first-come, first-served grant application. And it's a program that's focused primarily, it is focused on creating plans for safety, um, around pedestrians and bikes. And so, we would probably be looking for some, for some additional funding to flesh out, um, a real program around that, but an $80,000 grant would be a really great step in the right direction. And that's something as well that we think we can get, uh, going relatively quickly. Um, and then, the last thing that I want to emphasize is, in the next two rounds of paving, um, we're going to be doing some improvements, um, particularly around 45th and 53rd in the next paving program, um, some speed humps and some other, um, treatments that we're going to incorporate as part of our paving contracts, um, that you'll be seeing. So, with that, I'll try to do my best to answer questions, but we are pretty excited about the list that we have presented to you tonight.
Okay, clarifying questions? Any members of the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I'll go right to you, Member Medina.
Okay, um, thank you so much. I wanted to thank city staff for putting together such a beautiful item on this. I really love all these ideas. When I conceptualized of it, it was really in response to seeing the traffic and speed counts on 45th and 53rd, um, having spent so much time at BPAC and hearing this really need for urgency, watching other cities have press conferences and quick builds after someone died on city streets, and just knowing that we can do better. Uh, we have this progressive city council who actually gets transit in a very real way, and wanting to push us to be the city that prevented these things from ever happening, rather than reacting to these things. Um, so, especially with 45th and 53rd, being able to look at our paving project, um, and any potential funding as an opportunity to reclaim that space and make it safer, especially for children in that neighborhood, is very important to me. Um, and I kind of conceptualized this as three different pots. One would be policy. What policies can we as a council adopt, um, that improve the safety of bikes, pedestrians, and all of our residents long-term? And the big one on this list is the San Pablo Corridor, um, Avenue Corridor Improvements. I'm sure you're familiar with the 10-year plan, um, to improve San Pablo. As Laura McCamey of BPAC mentioned, if we're talking about 10 years from now, we need to add a canoe lane. Um, we need something faster. Uh, Councilmember Bouders and myself have been working, um, at our ILC with AC Transit. They have expressed support of a pilot for protected bike lanes, or a bus-only lane, or both, on San Pablo, um, with just the city of Emeryville, or ideally with our neighboring city of Oakland on either end, to intend that. But I really need the whole council to support this, so that we can work with our neighboring cities and agencies like ACTC, where somebody got a great appointment recently, um, to hopefully move these items along. Uh, I also want to highlight the enforcement aspect of it. Um, I would ask for your direction for the Public Works and Transportation Committee to sit down and create a list of ways we could better enforce for safety. Um, I spoke with our POA this morning, they're very interested in having this conversation with us about how we can protect bike lanes as they are, and how we can focus efforts best. Um, and then also, looking at those quick builds. So those are kind of the three main umbrellas, but I was so surprised with the list of things that came out of this, the LRSP that I'd never heard of before, lowering speed limit, which is one of the highest-value ways, one of the easiest things we can do to reduce deaths and serious injuries. Um, so really impressed with staff's works on this, and I really hope to have your support as a council to move forward.
Member Donahue?
I just want to say that, uh, having been on BPAC years ago, that the 20 mile an hour speed limit will significantly improve safety. And, uh, while some drivers might be upset about this, the actual amount of time they're saving, uh, you know, or expending because they're doing 20 versus 25 is just not that much in our town, but the amount of safety is dramatically higher statistically. It's just really worth doing. And so, uh, I, I just think that's an important feature of our bike boulevards, and we should follow through on that. Even if our density goes over the number that was recommended, the safety will go up dramatically if we lower the speed limit.
Excellent, thank you.
The only thing I would say is, I would thank, uh, Councilmember Medina for all her work on this. We have a lot of fun at the Transportation Committee pushing, um, some really great, uh, CIP items, and this is one that she's been very passionate about, and, um, we've had some great discussions at committee about it, and so I'm very pleased to support this and thank her for her efforts.
Thank you. Um, and with that, I'll look to-
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. Thank you. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to direct the city manager to undertake the actions described in, um, the attached resolution.
I second that.
And with that, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay. Oh, so that brings us to item 13, Department Head Reports.
Mayor Pats, members of the City Council, this is my monthly report on recent actions of the Planning Commission. At their last meeting, which was on January 23rd, I would note that Commissioner Young had an excused absent, from, absence from that meeting, so there were six commissioners present. There were four items on their agenda, they're listed here on your agenda. Uh, the first two were study sessions, um, and, uh, the first one was a study session on, uh, the Ohana Cannabis Retail Dispensary and Restaurant, a proposal to move across the street into, uh, the Broken Rack Building. That would require, um, an amendment to the code, or some kind of other approval, because it is within 250 feet of the Greenway, uh, which the code currently says is not permitted. The commission discussed a variety of options, and the one that they, uh, preferred was to amend the code to allow a reduction or waiver of the distance requirement from a park with a conditional use permit. That, um, issue will be, uh, we have that scheduled for a City Council study session on March 17th, so you can then hear the same presentation that the commission heard, and, uh, we can then get your direction on what sort of code amendment or other action we should take on the matter. Second study session was on the Public Market Proposed Master Sign Program. The, uh, commission heard the presentation and made some comments on the proposal. They generally received it favorably, and it's scheduled to go back to the commission on March 26th for consideration of approval. The third item was an appeal of the director's decision approving a minor conditional use permit to convert, uh, some storage space at the Hilton Garden Inn into new guest rooms. The, uh, commission approved the director's action approval, basically upheld the staff approval and, and denied the appeal. The vote on that was four to two, with Commissioners Barrera and Donaldson voting no. I would note that under the planning regulations, the commission's action on the appeal is final, and may not be further appealed to the City Council. And finally, they considered, uh, signs and facade changes to the public storage building at 6501 Shearmont Street. They approved that, uh, and that was on a vote of three to one with two abstentions. The ayes were Commissioners Barrera, Sohane, and Chair Guerrero. Uh, the no was Commissioner Keller, and the abstentions were Commissioners Donaldson and Vice Chair Thompson. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Member Bouders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the last item, uh, can you, can you summarize the reasons articulated for the abstentions and the no?
The proposal included an orange stripe along the top of the building. Uh, I think if I recall correctly, Commissioner Keller, who voted no, felt that that was a little too bright, and I think he also said that one of the signs was not necessary. Um, and the abstentions, they basically were just torn. They didn't, they, they, they heard the arguments in favor, they heard the arguments against, and they just couldn't decide, and so they chose to abstain.
There's a follow-up. Um, does any of the signs, are they lit signs?
Um, I believe they are, and they are dimmable, uh, as, as their standard condition now. If determined to be too bright, they are required to be dimmed.
Are they monument signs, or are they lit?
There is one monument sign. It's existing. I would note that most of these signs are existing or replacing existing signs.
So there are none over the height of the building?
No.
No.
Okay. Any other question? Any other Department Head Reports?
On behalf of the Public Works Department, you heard most of our work earlier this evening, but as you probably also heard, pile driving has started on the bridge.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you what?
Yeah.
For those of you who don't live next to the pile driving, you can't hear yourself anymore.
We're going to do a weekend waiver for them, right? On the pile driving?
The mayor is now a comedian.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Go for it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's taken you this long to find me humorous.
I find you funny.
And with that, we are to future agenda items.
With the finger.
No? No, no, okay. Go ahead.
We are allowed to make our own local building codes in some cases. And there is a mode of building that eventually is coming to California soon, perhaps 2021. But by embracing what is generally called cross-laminated timber construction, we could be encouraging developers to look at this seriously if we say that we are allowing this. And we would be encouraging local development in this greenhouse gas-friendly building method. And I would like to study what this would mean and have this on an agenda, or maybe have a joint study session with the Planning Commission.
Ask a question of Mr. Donahue?
Please.
Or maybe it's for Charlie, I don't know. Yeah, probably for Charlie, sorry. State, current state building code, does it allow for cross-laminated lumber to be used in building of buildings in?
I don't believe so. As Councilmember Donahue indicated, I believe the California Building Standards Commission is considering it for a future update of the code, but it's not currently in the code.
My support is when the state changes the law. I would then be supportive of dedicating staff time to it, because I agree with you that it's a environmentally friendly way of constructing buildings. It's also quicker in a lot of ways, and so I think that's a conversation we should have, but I don't see the point in having a study session about something that we cannot legally do right now myself.
Well, we can legally do it, was my point.
We can't. We can't use a reach code to go outside the scope of the state building code, is my understanding. Is that right?
I believe, yes, I believe you're correct.
Can I jump in? I asked our lobbyist, Nicolau De Luca, to get back to us on the status of the state building code update with CLT and whether or not this was one of the states that would allow you to make some exceptions for projects before the state had adopted updated building codes. We haven't heard back from him yet. I'd be super interested in hearing back from him before I get back to you, and that would answer the question of legality, I think. But maybe we can agendaize getting that update back from Townsend and Sessions.
He will be coming in April, April, for a presentation. We could ask him to address it as part of his presentation at that time. Is that, then, I know that's a couple of months from now, but that's the next time he'll be here.
So, Member Donahue has approached me with this item, and we've talked a little bit, and I'm supportive of it, and I have a question for Charlie on this, because I agree with Member Bowers, we don't want to, we don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I also know it takes us a while to get through the process. So my question is, how long after the state code changes will it take us to get caught up to that?
Well, the state code, as you know, is on a three-year cycle. I believe this might be being considered for one of the mid-cycle adjustments, which occurs in a year and a half, I think. I'm not clear whether that would be mandatory for cities to follow or not. I know the rest of the code, most of the code, takes effect on January 1st every three years, and it's effective whether the city adopts it or not. It's the local amendments that you have to be concerned about, that you have to make special findings for, that don't take effect until the state blesses your findings.
So with that timeline, I think it's very reasonable to wait till Nicolau comes in April, but I think I do want to keep this as an item, and I will be supportive of talking about it after we hear from Nicolau. To get a sense, is that everybody on board with that? And excellent. And so, no other future agenda items? We are...
I had one, it's technically not an agenda item, but I wanted to ask if we could, it doesn't need to come back to us unless something comes of it. I would just like to ask if we can give staff direction to review existing contracts that relate to data collection to ensure that we do not have any other existing contracts that we perhaps haven't seen or don't know about, and just ask staff to redo a review and report back only if necessary. Which doesn't mean that you have to report that you found anything, it just means that if you find something that you think we should discuss for a policy reason that can't be covered in your administrative discretion, consistent with existing policies...
So this being a future scheduling discussion, I'm not prepared to answer that because I don't know the time and extent and how we would do that, but I could, as a future scheduling item, try to figure out how we would do that at this point, and then report back to you on how much time and staff resources of who I could find to figure that out.
Could we additionally have you look into adjusting future contracts so folks can opt-in, check a box, and say whether or not they have, you know, a contract with ICE?
That is, Vice Mayor, thank you. That is something that we've actually started talking about, is prospectively. To be totally candid, we could very, relatively easily bring in, bring an item to you with new language for our RFPs, RFQs, RFI's, to be inserted in those prospectively. It would be, I think, a little more challenging to go back and look at all of our existing contracts and try to figure that out at this point. So if we want to put as a future scheduling item, modifying the language in our procurement processes, we can, I think we can do that.
And all contracts essentially come up for renewal at some point, essentially, right? So I support Councilmember Martinez's recommendation.
I think we all do.
Yes.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? Okay. And with that, we are adjourned. It is 9:11.